It would have to do with what type of drain system would be required. She, she was pretty vague about it. The state of Illinois Health Department would have oversight over this, not our local jurisdiction. So she said, just reinforce compliance with the State of Illinois Plumbing Code, which would address like drainage and things of that nature.
So whether you have a floor drain and you're dumping your oil in it and that type of thing?
Correct.
No floor drain in my shit.
You know how old the weller septic system is there?
Oh, boy.
Original stuff.
That's why we would require the compliance. Septic's not.
Oh, no, we did have a.
Fifteen years ago.
My dad had a new septic put in with a drain field.
Cause there's only three feet you gotta be away from the oil.
Yeah, well, the drain field collapsed or something and they had to completely redo it.
So where you work on these cars doesn't have a drain in the floor, but is it gravel floor or?
No, it's concrete.
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 Okay.
Anything that gets spilled, I put oil dry on it and then dispose the oil dry.
All right. Questions?
So how many vehicles were you thinking like would be the max that you were thinking about having sitting up?
She told us he could have fifteen and I said, no, more than five.
Is that including your personal? I don't know how many personal vehicles you have.
No. We have four personal ones, but only two of them, three of them are running right now.
Okay, so you're talking like a total of ten, uh, nine vehicles?
Maybe nine, eight, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it won't be very many cause they're usually, usually it comes in on the weekend and it's gone.
Comes in on a Friday.
I'm usually in there on the day and it's gone. I get it done, get it out of there.
But we just wanna, we don't wanna keep getting brought into court and having to pay fines.
So what's all the other buildings below the larger building?
The one right next to the house is a garage with a shed behind it. There's a shed up in the corner of the machine shed and then these, there's two sheds here and then that other pile there towards the corner. Is firewood. We sell to Woodhaven Lakes where they do most of their mowing at.
So you don't eat firewood then?
Well, actually, yes.
My son does in town.
Our old house did have firewood. That's, well, that's mainly how we got started on firewood.
Who owns the property around you there in the farm?
Jim.
Hart.
I think it's Jim Hart.
Oh, okay.
From, from Ashton.
Actually, she's got the names of all of them over there. The other one across the road's got five names on it. But his cousin rents it.
So the one property is owned by James Hart, which is the one to the west of this photo. On the east side of the road, it is Norma Stuckenberg Trust, Dennis Stuck, Stuckenberg Trust, Dennis and Sandra as co-trustees, Dennis and Nancy as co-trustees.
And just out of curiosity, how long have you been doing this?
Oh, gosh.
Here?
I'm sixty-three.
We've been here, it'll be nine years in July.
In this house since, yeah, in July.
Cause your mom moved to Dixon and we moved in. But he did work on cars in town when we lived in town.
Okay.
But he didn't have that many there. He had one at a time.
Good.
So, so at this stage, you just plan on continuing doing what you're doing now?
As long as we don't get in trouble for that. That's why we're here.
So. Do we have any more questions from us at this point? Do we have any questions from? Okay. All right. Well, are we ready?
Yeah, if you guys wanna return to your seats, you can. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next part of this will be the findings of fact.
Start off, you can start. Effect of the proposed use upon character of the neighborhood.
The last one we said, Earl and Row that improved the character of property. That's other property that we talked about.
It what?
Improved the character of the property.
Of the neighborhood?
Neighborhood. The last one a month ago. Does that apply to this one?
Can you make sure you're having these conversations into the mic? Sorry.
I would say there's no change. Unless anybody feels strongly otherwise.
So the last one you're saying we said it improved?
Character.
Character.
Cause they cleaned up some of that.
Okay, yeah, but.
That's what I had written down, but it's not yours.
Well, you don't know how old this picture is.
Well, that's true too.
Cause if that was, came off of the.
The picture is old and they have made progress while working with my office in the last year.
Okay.
Wanna say improve?
What's that?
So Craig wants to say improve.
Yeah, improve the character of the past.
Well, it's saying the character of the neighborhood, not the past of the property.
Whatever. I'm not.
Go ahead and make it in the form of a motion.
Okay.
You will? I'm, I'm with that.
You, go ahead.
You got the wording you need, who's writing it?
I, I am.
Okay. What wording do you need, just what you said that improved the character of the neighborhood?
Does improve the character of the neighborhood?
Anything else on that one? So we have a motion and a second?
I moved.
I, I second.
And you second? Okay. Is there any further comment on that? Okay. Um, we have a motion that it will improve the character of the neighborhood. Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. The next one is the effect of the proposed use upon the traffic conditions.
I would say no change.
You wanna make a motion?
I move there's no change to traffic conditions.
I second.
We have a motion and a second that there will be no changes to the traffic conditions. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Is there anything further on the proposed traffic conditions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the effect of the proposed use upon the public utility facilities.
There really is no public utility facility.
Well, they, they do have electricity at their house, so it's, but there's really no change.
I move there's no change on public facilities.
I second.
We have a motion and a second that there's no, uh, change on the public utility facilities. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Uh, the next one is the effects of the proposed use upon the surrounding properties.
No, you missed one.
What's that?
You missed one.
Number four.
Oh, I missed number four, okay. Um, effects of the proposed use upon public health, public safety and general welfare. If he's putting brakes on cars, he's helping the public safety. Improving it. So. It always seems to help to have brakes.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody wanna make a motion on that one?
I move that repairing the automobiles improve the safety for the drivers.
That form of motion you moved?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion that repairing our automobiles is a public safety thing for the people that own the automobiles. Is there a second to that?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any, um, further commentary? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Last and finally.
Two more.
What's that? Two more? Oh, yeah, we got five and six. Uh, the effects of, of the proposed use upon the surrounding properties.
I move there's no change.
If, if, if they felt there was a change, they'd probably be here to make commentary.
I'll second that.
So we have a, you second that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on that one, that there are no effects on the proposed use for the, upon the surrounding properties. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. The last one, number six, the effects of the proposed use upon the environmental concerns. And that was, um, oil spills and that type of thing. But it's on a cement floor without a drain. So.
I move that all, there is all current regulations are gonna be, are being met. Environmental regulations.
Say that again.
I move that apparently of all environmental regulations are being, uh.
Are you saying apparently or are you saying they are being?
They are being met. There we go.
Let's say that again, Craig, there.
The environmental regulations are being met concerning, um.
No concern so long as environmental regulations are being met?
Yeah.
Make that in the form of a motion, Craig.
Do we have a second on that one?
I second.
You second that? Okay. We have a motion and a second that the environmental regulations are being met since work is being done on a concrete floor with no drain. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next is a recommendation to the full county board. To approve or deny the petition.
I move we approve this petition.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Um. Now, since this is a special use. We can put some conditions on there. So. We need to look at those and. Talk about those a little bit. Um. The petitioners. Made the comment that they have four of their own vehicles. But they would not be having more than five vehicles of someone else's there at any one time.
It does specify how many vehicles are being worked on at one time?
Yeah. It's also putting in there how long a period they can actually sit there on the property.
Right.
Distinguish.
And again, these are just guidelines just based off of what we've done previously. You are free to do with these whatever you want. Um, use them, don't use them, change them, just so you know they're they're you can. You have the ability to make your own conditions. These are just my suggestions.
No, we understand that.
Okay.
I'm.
Well.
I think the five vehicles in seven days.
Well, and he talked about being. Brakes and well changes and that kind of thing. Um. So. Basically, most of the repairs he was talking about should be done in a matter of a couple of weeks.
Well, I don't know. I just. We're going to limit the X amount of vehicles out there, then obviously the turnover has got to be stepped up there. I don't, I think one week at a time for these vehicles. Is enough, otherwise they get. Added to the lot there.
Right.
I'd make a motion. Are these motions or suggestions?
Uh, we make a motion to put this in for a condition of what we think a condition should be.
The whole thing or each one of them?
Each one of them.
Yeah.
You can do it either way. Um, if you want to first draft all the conditions and then make a motion, you can. Or you can make a motion for each condition you propose.
We can go down the list first and put in what we think and then we can. Do the whole thing.
My suggestion would be five vehicles or seven days.
They need, that's five customer vehicles.
Yeah, so we need to put in there states that customer vehicles.
Not personal vehicles.
Right.
With the type of work he's doing, I can't see him having a big problem getting parts. That's sometimes a problem, getting the parts and the fixed stuff, but with this type of work, I would assume that you can what you need fairly quick.
I agree.
I would say we would agree with the second one that no vehicles should be parked or stored in a public right of way.
Correct.
Yeah.
And.
No, no signage.
No signage. Um. Placed on the property unless it's approved by the zoning office.
So I know on number four and the previous one on Strilling Road, we designated an area to be able to park. The vehicles that it was working on, so they weren't scattered all throughout the five acres.
Alice, did you tell us that they had a designated area?
I did not. Um, Jonathan, can you pull the picture back up, please? So they had been storing them kind of along that south property line, if I'm correct. And I I would anticipate them to keep storing them in that same area.
You're saying along the property line?
Along the southern property line.
Okay.
Kind of where you see that white box where kind of near where they keep their firewood.
Yeah.
So we just said generally like behind the house.
Yeah, the difference between this property and the one we previously saw i- is a number of acres. Um, so.
We're we're not behind the house.
No.
We're down here at the bottom.
I was just drawing a line across the property.
It was drawn a line from the.
From the back of the house, uh, laterally, from while we're looking at this picture. Yeah, yeah. Set back, I don't know, you could say. I don't know, it's hard to tell thirty yards off the off the road or.
I think clearing up these properties in the country for allowing special uses, we should designate an area to be parking these vehicles, not just scattered throughout the yard.
The main thing is to have it south of the building, south of the shed, and south of the house.
Right.
Yeah, southwest. Southwest corner of the property, generally speaking.
Yes. Um, in that it essentially, this is an enforcement tool. Um, it's so that we can know by driving by the property. Okay, that area, they got five cars. We know that's where they store what they're working on. We know they're in compliance. So it just helps us being able to identify what is personal and what is.
Of your personal property.
I'd say southwest corner.
I would say probably along the southern property line. Near the southwest corner, just something giving a vague description of where we can know to look.
Yeah, I prefer to keep it away from the road so it's not, they don't start working their way up towards the road.
You can also say they have to be set back so many feet from the roadway along that southern property line if that's what you're looking for.
I don't think that's necessary.
I think the southwest corner of the property.
Near the southwest corner of the property.
Plenty of space to work with.
Yeah.
I think in this case, we've got one advantage in that he's got an assistant manager, I think, which will maybe help with this process of keeping things organized.
I don't think she heard you. So I'm going to put down the near the southwest corner of the property. Vehicles that will be worked on will need to be parked. Right?
I think number five and number six. Basically, just the way they're written on here. Petitioner shall not operate a junkyard or a scrap processing facility from the subject reality. And number six, the petitioner shall comply with the Illinois State Plumbing Code for Auto Repair Shops. And that came from the Health Department. I don't know, does anybody have any question about those?
No.
Good. And they already talked about the hazardous materials as far as what they do with it as far as storing the oil and getting rid of it as a barrel at a time. Number eight is our normal thing is that a special use is for the petitioner only. And if the property is changed or somebody moves into the house. The. Uh. Special use goes away.
So this one did cause a little bit of concern for the petitioners as their son may assist in in the business as well. Um. So. They would like to see it be able to transfer to their son. But no one else. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and actually, that's something I thought of. I probably should have asked, but um, is that something we've done in the past when it transfers up between family members?
Not that I recall. This is kind of something new we're doing, calling this out. Um. But I think as long as we're specific and it's enforceable, then. We can do it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I guess my suggestion would be should the subject reality transfer ownership to anyone other than the petitioners? Or their son, and we'll say his name. The special use permit shall become null and void.
Okay.
Because a special use goes to the person that owns the property that their name is.
Yeah.
Unless we, I I guess, according to Stephanie, unless we call it out, it stays with the person and not the land.
Good.
So unless they put their son's name on the title. We we can't do it now or couldn't, you know, with the what we're set up now. But you can add that sentence to.
Yeah, so that's what they were saying. It it's not, they're not going to. Sell their property or anything. They're not looking to, if they do, if situations arise. The son's going to inherit the the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then all we would have to do is read that sentence the same way and then at the end put a comma and say other than the petitioner's son.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can fill in the name.
And do we what? Do we need to name the son?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll we'll want to, um.
For me? Okay.
Okay.
We put term.
Same spelling, different spelling. Okay, I might actually get both of those middle names then and we'll put that in there.
And if anybody has any other ones to add to that? Now's your time.
I I would stay with the rules that, you know, owners of the property are the ones that are asking for the special use. If it comes to the time where he inherits the property, he can come back in and ask for another special use.
And if it's in compliance?
If it's in compliance, and at that time it might not be.
Good, allow it.
Yeah. In my opinion.
How long have, I mean, you said you've been working with them for about a year now?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's a year lost business if we do it that way. Make him go back and petition the county to issue him the special use. Uh, but if we throw in this clause, he'll be able to just kind of continue with business as usual.
It's taken a year to get to this point right now?
No, that. So we started initially with compliance. And they were on our list. We sent a letter. We didn't have the communication. So the second time we sent out the letter and they got, they were sent to court, the state's attorney said, hey, why don't you go talk to her? So they came over. This is how we got to here, but no, this was an entire year on the special use. Um, they filed at the end of January. Um, and here we are.
And that, and then in that year's time, they cleaned up part of the property.
Correct.
Okay.
I think one thing at a time, in my opinion. Allowing the special use moving forward, doing the business. At a later date when the son inherits a property and he still wants to do this, then they can reentertain this special use at that point.
Good. Everybody?
So Stephanie. You said you could, we could go either way. It's Stephanie's opinion, either put the son or not the son, or you have to ask her?
I don't have Stephanie's opinion for you tonight.
Yeah, it's fine with Tim.
Let's, let's do it without the son and he can come back in and. If it's in compliance, it's easy to get it done again.
Yeah.
Okay? We'll vote on the whole. Is there any other? Is there any other conditions that anybody thinks that we ought to put on it? If we don't have any other conditions, then I'm going to have. You. Review it for us, tell us what we said. And where we are. And then I'll need in a form of a motion.
All right, number one. Petitioners shall be limited to five customer vehicles at one time. The vehicles will be allowed to remain on site for a period of seven days. We all agreed. Number two, no vehicles should be parked or stored in a public right of ways. Number three, we agreed no sign should be placed on the property unless sign such signage is approved by the Lee County Zoning Board. Number four, storage of vehicles shall be in the designated location only. We put in there near the southwest corner of the property, vehicles will be worked on, need to be parked there. Number five, we all agreed petitioners shall not operate a junkyard or scrap processing facility for the subject reality. Number six, petitioners shall comply with the Illinois State Plumbing Code for all or auto repair shops. Number seven, petitioners shall comply with, among other things, the hazardous material section of the Lee County Code titled eleven, chapter fifteen, section twelve. Number eight, should the subject reality transfer ownership to anyone other than the petitioners, the special use permit shall become null and void upon transferred at any new owner.
Do we have a motion that that's the way we? Send it on?
Sure, I just made the motion.
You made a motion. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, motion carries. So. Your petition is. Passed. And we'll go on to regular county board. Um. It'll go on to the regular county board.
On March twentieth, twenty twenty-five at six P M.
Good. All right. Now. You want to comment? On the progress?
I can, I can. Um, just so you know, you guys are free to go. We are, we're done with yours. Um, you don't have to attend county board. Um, you can if you want to. If you have any questions, just give me a call tomorrow, okay? Thank you. Um, just one, one thing I want to mention before I forget, next month we go back to seven P M. meeting times. So just for you all to be aware. Um. And then also kind of along those lines, um. Last month, the county board sent a petition for text amendment to the Planning Commission. This text amendment is the language that would essentially replace the zoning board of appeals with a zoning hearing officer. Um. How we, how the county has come to this is. We have the issue of zoning is very legal. Um, and there's a lot of litigation now popping up with zoning and new state laws and everything. Um, the county feels that this will add more protection having a licensed attorney. Conducting the hearings. conducting the hearings. The other issue that we were having is the issue of conflicts of interest and perceived conflicts of interest. This is something we cannot get away from. We are in a small community. Everyone knows everyone. Everyone works with everyone. Everyone, this is our community. So we were constantly running into issues of conflicts of interest, and what seemed to be more difficult was the perceived conflicts of interest. And those are in, conflicts that aren't really conflicts of interest on the law, but it affects the public and how they perceive we're doing business. And a lot of times, you know, it, it can lead to a negative perception because they feel that a board member has too close of a relationship with, you know, somebody involved in a petition. Um, so we did bring that language forward Monday night, um, before the Planning Commission. In addition to that language is proposed language that would allow special use permits to be amended once they've been approved by the county board, but prior to pulling a building permit. Um, one of the projects that we're dealing with now, um, one of the conditions of their permit is that, um, the project has to be, the solar project has to be removed in thirty-five years. Well, that was from the date that the county board made its decision. Their land lease with their property owner doesn't kick in until their project is commercially operational. So there is now this gap between what we said as a condition and how they're going to be able to fulfill their contract. Um, so we're creating language that would allow this, this company to come back in, to amend that specific issue without having to rehear the entire project over again. That, the, the main discussion had by the Planning Commission, and there, there were no members of the public present for this public hearing. Um, but the board did provide really good discussion about, um, you know, how did we, how did the county get to this, this decision? Um, what are we losing by taking away a board of five laypersons and, and replacing it with one attorney? It was brought up whether a hybrid of a zoning board of appeals and a zoning hearing officer would be efficient. Um, I was really pleased with how the meeting went on a Monday night. I think we had a lot of good discussion. Um, ultimately, the Planning Commission made a motion to accept the petition for text amendment as it was written, and it failed for a lack of emotion. They then went on to make a motion to accept with some revisions, and this motion did pass. Uh, what they are recommending, um, for revisions is that they would like to see the text include language that would allow removal of a zoning hearing officer should an occasion arise where we need to do so. The county would have the, the ability to do it. The text would include language that would limit the terms of the zoning hearing officer, so that we would not be just the same person decade after decade. The text would include language that would allow the county board to annually review the zoning hearing officer. And the text would not allow the zoning hearing officer to create their own rules or procedure, and that the county board would have some say in those rules. Um, so they did make that motion that did pass, and that is the recommendation going to the county board this month. Um, so that is where we are at. If this continues to progress at the pace it is, it will go to the county board this month. Um, the county board would then potentially make a motion to hold it over for a month, which is in its rules whenever it deals with a text amendment. And then we could possibly see this enacted at the end of April. So it is very possible that next month would be your last month of hearings. So does anyone have any questions at this point?
Who's on the Planning Commission?
Chuck Beckman, a retired judge, Chuck Beckman, uh, Ben Forster, Emily Pratt, um, Chris Jones, Ellen Smith, and we have an alternate, Amy Palmer.
I have a question.
Yes.
For the April meeting, do we have any petitions?
Yes.
And what is, what are the petitions?
I actually have hearing application packets for you. We have a solar, we actually have two solar petitions.
Okay. Just, I'm just saying, that meeting is on the third. I'm leaving on the fifth to go to Germany. I won't be back until the twelfth. Then I believe I'm leaving again, I want to say on the seventeenth.
Okay.
For another meeting for about a week.
The company is actually, um, trying to lock in a hearing facilitator at this time. Um, Mr. Zollinger is not available. Um, he, he has reached out to retired Judge Tim Slavin. Um, so it's really going to come down to their availability as well. Um, and we know Judge Slavin tends to have a full schedule, so once I see if he's going to be coming on, what his availability is, I'm going to start reaching out to you guys to try to figure out how we're going to make this work.
Well, my only comment is with a solar farm, or, and I don't know whether it's commercial or community or what.
Community.
Community. The only thing I was saying is sometimes those are one, two, and maybe three or four meetings.
Yes.
And if that were the case, if we weren't able to get it done in April, we may have to run over to May.
Correct. So I'm waiting on more information, and then I'm going to have to get with Charlie and Stephanie at the state's attorney's office to kind of see how to make this fall in line, because I don't know, I, I don't know yet. Um, but in theory, this could pass as soon as April. I think it's the twenty-third, maybe of April, twenty-fourth, um.
The, um. The next question I have, if they have a, an attorney as a hearing officer, I know Mr. Zollinger is from Whiteside County, my question is, is it an attorney from outside of our county?
It will have to be.
It'll have to be.
I mean, pretty much, um, we've already had conversations with local attorneys, and there, they, there's no way because of the small community conflicts of interest.
Right. So then the, the other question comes up, what if there is a common wind farm and/or solar farm going across the Lee County line into Whiteside County? I'm using Tim as a question. Do we have, will the county then have to find somebody from another county?
The goal would be to ha, to name a hearing facilitator and an alternate hearing facilitator. Um, so that way, if one cannot act, there is a backup. Um.
But I'm assuming that backup would be from a different county.
That, that, yes. Um, I believe the state's attorney's office is going to be overseeing the hiring process. Um, but yes, in theory, it's going to have to either be a brand new attorney that doesn't have any ties to this area or somebody that is not local.
It's, how much of a job is this hearing officer, have you talked to Whiteside and Olgo County about their hearing officer situations?
Yes, um, talked to Whiteside. They also went to this format recently, um, and they, they have really liked it. Um, Olgo County is a little bit different. Um, they're staying with their zoning board of appeals. Um, they don't, I don't think they brought up, I don't think there's any discussion to go to this format.
So how much of a workload would this person be? Would he be in private practice also, or is this full-time or?
Yeah, we would have imagined that they would have a private practice or be associated with a firm or agency. Um, this, it's only going to be, you know, potentially a minimum of twelve times per year. Um, but as, as we need. There's been discussions about how, um, how we're, how we'll pay them, but the goal is to be budget neutral, um, not to increase what we are currently spending for zoning hearings, um, and just readjust what you guys were receiving as per diems into the wages that would on the facilitator.
Okay. Anybody else have any other question?
Just got here.
Pink slip on your first day.
No retirements for you. Yeah, just getting broke in.
Yeah, but fire me after a lot of years.
One session, fifty years.
The extremes.
I don't think I have any more questions.
Okay.
Anybody else? When they have a hearing officer, will they, they still have public Zoom meetings?
Yes. We, I, that is, the only thing that I envision changing is, i- instead of five, it'll be one. But I, my goal is to keep everything the same. Um.
So, so when we're no longer on the zoning board, we should come and watch the Zoom meetings, and then we can criticize whatever happens at that meeting.
You can come and participate.
Somebody's got to ask a question.
Public comment, you'll be able to say whatever you want. We won't even stop you.
Oh, you're right. All right. So the next thing on the agenda is a motion to recess. And the next regular scheduled meeting for the zoning board of appeals will be at seven P M. on Thursday, April third. That means everybody has a little more time in the field. Potentially. If it's not raining, and it warms up enough. Anyway. So, um, I need a motion to recess.
I'll make a motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. It's time to move on.